That was Jim Kane. All in favor?
Aye.
Attorney client.
Move into the meeting.
That's a good thing to come.
Might as well start it, right? All right. Uh, I move that we open the, uh, uh, Monday, October second work session. The village of Cornwall Hudson Board second. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Rise and say the pledge. Please.
Uh, pledge allegiance to the flag.
States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
In the mayor's absence, perhaps the deputy mayor should reside or we should just wait ten seconds and he'll be back.
Yeah, he wanted to start with, um, this gentleman first, so.
We did the business, we're open and in session.
Excellent. All right. Can I ask everybody stand please and face the flag?
Already did that? I didn't even get to take part?
You can do it by yourself. All right, all right, all right, all right. All right. Hey, um, first of all, Dave, are we live? All right. Well, we hope, hope it's not a plan. All right. First of all, thank you, everybody, for your patience. I'm sorry. The attorney-client session with the board went a little longer than we expected, but we had a lot on the agenda and this meeting tonight should hopefully, uh, we should work through the items that we have quicker. So, um, why don't we start out with the monthly department reports? Um, you should have a packet in front of you. Everybody has a packet. All the board members, please take a look at it right now. Um, it's fire department and village treasurer. Um, so there's some, there's some holes here because they're not finished. Mike will get to you as soon as I get to the department reports, all right? So, all right. So, um, where we are right now, we're still working on warrant number 10, monthly revenue and expenditure reports by fund. You can look through it. I'm not going to read through those numbers. I'll do it at the village board meeting when everything is all totaled out. Any questions from the board? You can ask me, but then I'm going to, I'm going to refer you to the village treasurer who is diligently working on this.
Chief Dixon, you sent yours today by email, I think, right?
Correct. All right. So moving forward to the building department, um, building inspector Manny Carmona had to be at a meeting down the night tonight, could not be there, but we have spoken about a number of things. You can look at his department report. Um, I am thrilled to mention that Jimmy Moore, a Cornwall kid, not a kid anymore, he's a grown man, um, and a firefighter, I believe, over in Arlington, Dave? Over in Arlington, um, was just hired by the board, um, as a part-time code enforcement officer and will be at the end of this week, on Friday, I believe, have all the certifications to be a building inspector. We hired him as a code enforcement officer because there's a different standard for that in the county code. Um, and he will be joining us next Monday, um, as a part-time, twenty hours per week. We've already negotiated the salary. The board's already agreed to that. We're not going to rehash that. But he will be filling in, doing some stuff with Manny and at the same time, um, working some of Manny's off hours. So Manny's here from, generally speaking, seven AM to seven PM on Mondays. He works Tuesdays from five PM to 10 PM, Thursdays, five PM to 10 PM, and is off on Wednesdays and Fridays. My goal is to have Jimmy Moore here Wednesdays and Fridays and to fill in on some of the other dates where, um, you know, when Manny's in to get some training. So that is that. Um, so Manny's not here to give his report. If any trustee has an issue with that, please talk to me or talk to the code enforcement officer.
Mr. Moore's first name?
Jimmy. I believe it's J.I.M.M.Y. Jimmy Farber's J.I.M.I., so I don't want to, I think it's J.I.M.M.Y. And last name is M.O.O.R.E. Jimmy Moore. Um, okay, so next is the fire department. Um, I see Chief Quinn is behind me. Chief, anything to add to the fire department report for the trustees?
Um, nothing to add, but I'll point out on one of the items down there, the, uh, evaluation of the fleet is complete. Um, the evaluator would like to come to present it to the board and the, uh, board of fire commissioners. Um, so whatever date works best for you all. Okay?
Just a minute, just for the record, I did circulate a draft of the fire and ambulance volunteer workers tax exemption local law.
Yeah.
Email. I don't know if you saw that.
I believe that is down there under other business, Joe. Is it on here?
I'm just making a mention of it.
Excellent. I want that resolved as quickly as possible. Okay, chief, anything else to add? Assistant chief trainer, anything else to add on fire committee, on fire department matters or fire company matters?
Nope.
All right. Okay, so moving forward, let's move to the police department. Chief Dixon. Anything the board should know?
Just, um, we just, uh, added six more, uh, body cameras that we got through a grant.
Finally.
And it works off a scanning card system. So, long story short, this officer now has a scan card. When you come on duty, they will scan it over the scan card reader and be assigned a particular body worn camera. This is good, especially in the event that the officer works overtime and the body camera starts to lose its charge. He can then just proceed with the same, uh, format and get himself another body camera.
Excellent. The chief and I had a conversation this morning. I reached out to the board of trustees. The chief is always very good at securing grants for this village, which I appreciate. Um, one of the grants that he's putting in for includes, um, plate readers, licensed plate readers, and I wanted to just kind of put that on the radar for the village board so that they understood what that was. We had a conversation about that this morning with the superintendent's meeting, um, talked about locations on where to put them. Chief, anything you want to put? Because I know there were concerns from some of the trustees. How does this information get harvested, collected? Where is it stored? What license plates is it, uh, you know, is it tracking? And how does this impact us in a society where civil liberties and reasonable expectation of privacy is very important to us?
Well, the only way that the, you can be able to get the actual license plate information is if the officer, which would be me and the sergeant, would have access to the information. So let's just say we had a plate that was used in a larceny. We would have the plate number and then we would run it through what's called e-justice and that would give us the, uh, proper data that we would need to determine who the operator was. So again, the only two people that would have access to any of that would be the sergeant and I.
So a police officer, to put this into layman's terms, a police officer couldn't see a license plate of a attractive female and go, I want to know who that is, take that and use that. The only people that can access the data that's being collected would be the sergeant and the police chief. This is used for bolos, be on the lookout for, or amber alerts or things like that. There's a crime in Newburgh, there's a crime in New Windsor, there's a crime in Florida, and police are tracking a vehicle as it's coming up ninety-five or coming across eighty-four, coming down nine W. It would alert our police officers in the event that they have to make a traffic stop and they don't know that the person in this eighty-nine Toyota Camry just killed their wife and children and is wanted. They would know. The license plate reader would hit on that and say that person is now inside the village. We have a number of different ingress egress points. We have Hudson Street, obviously. We have Shore Road. Um, we talked about Academy. Mike, you mentioned one this morning I missed. Boulevard. Yeah. So the chief's recommendation is we just start small. We start with maybe Shore Road and start with, um, Hudson Street on the town-village line. Um, and he's going to get with the chief Gabbett with the town, find out what the town's doing. I think we should be working in concert on this. This is not twenty-first century technology. It's twentieth century technology. So for us to be able to do it, I think it's a step in the right direction. And for the chief to get a grant on it, so it saves the village money, I think it's a, it's a no brainer.
Is that, is the information foilable?
Um, that's a good, I would have to research that, see how it works. I know New Windsor's got it.
Does this, how, how deep does the scan go? Does it, uh, pick up unregistered, uninspected vehicles?
Um, again, I don't know. I don't believe that data would show up because again, it's just basically a.
Because I know fancy plate scanners like they use on the thruway do. And they work and they're great because.
But they're trying to get you to pay your tolls. We don't care about that here.
They're trying to find stolen vehicles and they do it all the time.
Yeah, and this would probably do that too. If there was a stolen vehicle.
Interstate.
Somebody puts the VIN number in and says, here's the license plate, here's the VIN number.
Correct.
So let me, I, just to answer, understand the very most basic question. These readers would scan every license plate that comes into the village. Yeah. That bugs me.
Why?
Because I think that, uh, you know, you, you have a reasonable expectation of privacy. I think that being surveilled in that way is, you know.
Public place, your reasonable expectation of privacy.
Where you are actually, a public place is where you're actually expected to be able to be private. If I go into, you know, uh, Radio City Music Hall, I might expect to have my face taken a picture.
But on the street here, which the village or the state or the county owns, you have zero expectation of privacy.
That's, you have, you might be visible.
Is it Tamabucci? Takayuki, Takayuki, I'm sorry. Um, obviously you're familiar with them from New Windsor. Have they been a very valuable asset to the department?
Extremely valuable.
Tell us what you do first and who you are and where you live. I'm trying to wait to get to you, but.
This is not why you're here.
This is not why you're here.
And I will, I don't know all the details now, so like in terms of a foiling, I'm not sure. That's not really my purview. Um, my name is Mike Takayuki. I live at fifteen Gene Court. I also happen to be a police officer in the town of New Windsor, which has an extensive, um, plate reader, uh, system, um, both mobile and stationary. I mean, in my experience, it's an invaluable tool. It lets you know who's coming through your town. It does not, um, provide any personal information off the license plate. It's simply a scan of the plate. And if your town agency had previously entered that plate to alert you, then the town will get an alert that that plate is there. Otherwise, it's just beep, 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 nothing. So.
Keep it moving.
If somebody gets their car stolen, you put the plate in, it hits on one of our stationary readers. Now our dispatchers know it's in town.
Do you have them on your patrol cars as well?
I think we only have.
Some of them, yeah, they're expensive. They are. Troopers all hot.
We have mostly stationary.
How do you cover a city of twenty-nine thousand people? And I don't even know what the square footage or the square mileage is. How do you guys cover it? And don't give me the exact numbers, but do you have every ingress egress point in and out of New Windsor pretty much covered or just main arteries?
Major intersections, and I believe the goal is to have every, every entrance into the, into the town.
Sense.
I mean, uh, the city of Newburgh is going through the process now. I believe they're doing the same thing. I, like I said, I, I understand your concerns and I think that's a lot of people's, it's invaluable tool as just a patrol officer.
And the only way you're going to get the data, either if, if the plate is put in there as a, as a hot plate, meaning if the vehicle is wanting a connection with something, but it's just going to just have the plate.
How long is the record of my automobile's presence in the village?
I would have to find out as far as what the retention period is.
So like, I mean, you know, let's say, let's say you drive around going about your business, doing something, and some aspect of your life becomes illegal at some point. And, well, thinking specifically, you know, uh, in Florida right now, there are all kinds of restrictions and in Tennessee. There's restrictions on people who are trans or, you know, just.
On what?
Trans, people who are trans.
Driving?
No, no, not necessarily driving. But.
But why would it be illegal?
They're being restricted in various ways in public. So listen, I'm not, I'm not saying that this is what's going to happen here. I'm saying that, let's say, there are currently no laws against some aspect of your existence or life, but the law, a law is passed. Does a police agency then have the ability to go back and sort of profile your location based on where your license plate was seen in the last two years? You know, so it's a, it's a retention.
Yeah, I don't think they use it.
But it relates to, if what you're saying is, if there is an instance where a license plate has been captured because of some crime or whatever, that is put into the system as be on the lookout. And that is what triggers, for the patrol officers, that's what triggers, you know, the scanner hits and there's a hit and that's identified and then you can go respond.
Talking about like retroactive searches of the database?
That is kind of what I'm wondering about.
It is done. I mean, we have, we've had cases of like domestic incidents and we didn't know what car the perpetrator used to get into our town. Then we got a timeframe and it was luckily in the middle of the night and we did a, did a, um, database search and we found out pretty, pretty much pinpointed what car it was just based off the time.
And I think Congress was pretty resolute, um, back when Mr. Clapper was in front of them in regards to, um, hanging on to metadata. Chief, what is it, sixty days, ninety days that we keep the body worn camera information? Ninety days. We are not in the business of storing metadata. I could care less tomorrow. If a crime doesn't occur in this village, I could care less whether or not you pull through, somebody else pulls through, whatever. And I don't think we need to be storing that or harvesting that and keeping that for a long time. But to, to his point, um, it is a tool that is being used right now because every criminal case right now, if you don't have forensic data and evidence and you can't, you know, show a camera or show, you know, forensic harvesting, you're not making cases. It's a, it's a good tool, but I don't think that's what the license plate reader, at least from our perspective, is going to be used for.
I got a question for you.
Once there's, there's actually what's called LPRs. You've probably seen them on trunks of police cars.
Yes.
That's, that's a whole different ball of wax. That's tied in with the e-justice system in New York State DMV.
Right. That's what my question, that's what my question.
That'll read the plate and give you the data.
So if yours, if you go through that reader.
By, that's, uh, the officer deploys that manually at a given moment, right? They pull somebody over, they.
Well, they set up stations. And while the officer is driving, it's picking up the license plates that.
Coming and go.
Yeah.
So what it does though is that, that's what I was going to ask the officer. Is this, are we harvesting, not harvesting, but because it's instantaneous, are we taking, you know, do we, is our scanner going to be the type that takes the DMV?
No.
Okay. So that's a whole different ball.
No.
So.
The officer would have to manually.
The trooper sees that your car's not registered.
E-justice, which is tied into New York State DMV, to run that plate to obtain the data. And again, to reiterate, it would just be done to either me or the sergeant.
And, and while we're working this, so we can wrap this up, while we're working on this, I am good with this village board meeting with the chief and talking about what our policy should be, the same way it was with body worn cameras. We talk about a policy. I can go online. The chief can find something that, working in New York City or New Windsor, and then we'll adopt something that's appropriate for here. We're not there yet. All I'm saying is, I think this is a tool that we should have. It's twentieth century technology. We should have this, and if the chief can get us a, you know, a grant that covers it, then the board will circle back and talk about that. Chief, what else? Anything else?
Nothing else. And if, if it also helps too, I can speak with, uh, Patrick Mangan as far as him coming to a, a work session. He can kind of go over to more details. He's the one that was, would handle the installing.
He's the IT guy in New Windsor. He handles all of our computers here in the village, here down at DPW, everywhere else. And he's also the one that hooked us up when we brought body worn cameras online. Gosh, has it been two and a half years now?
March of two thousand twenty-one, I believe.
Yeah, so we're, we're heading into our third year of that. Okay.
For the record, I'm all in favor of it for the law enforcement purposes as described tonight.
You got to balance it. I get it.
There is always the potential for misuse and I just want to understand what's, uh.
To, 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 totally get it.
Doesn't like to stop surveillance.
Yeah, that's the problem is that we all sit here and there's a continuum between a hundred percent public safety and civil liberties. And we're all trying to find that sweet spot in the middle where we have civil liberties, but by the same token, we're being safe. So good point. All, all good arguments. All right. Moving on, Dave, public works department, what do you got for the trustees?
Yeah, Christmas comes this month, right? Just a ball bowl cleanup, uh, truck is in, we're waiting, mostly, we're, we're just about ready to get that in service, so.
Awesome. Got lettered and all that?
No, no, I'm waiting for him, as you know.
I do, I do.
Hey, where's your mask? You got exposed just like me.
I tested clean.
Me too. CDC.
All right, what else?
Down three employees.
Yeah, all right. Um, so we're, we're shorthanded in DPW, um, squared away on all our projects going forward.
We're, uh, moving forward. I mean, best we can.
Biggest issue that the DPW superintendent was directed by the, the board at the mayor's office the past couple of weeks, keeping our storm water drains unobstructed and cleaned of debris. So we literally had two teams out a day across the last few storms to make sure that we kept those, um, from getting backed up and putting water on people's property as best we could. We were lucky. The July night storm put six point eight inches of water on us in a hyper-localized storm over a three hour period. You realize on Saturday JFK Airport took eight inches of water in three hours. I mean, six point eight is bad enough. And we had to deal with a mountain. I know JFK doesn't have a mountain, but literally there were terminals that were two feet underwater, so.
And nowhere to run.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, that was our big focus, so please understand, um, we try to be proactive here in the village, but by the same token, we have to be reactionary in the sense that when things happen or when we expect them to happen, we got to get out in front of it. So thanks, Dave. Anything else? No?
No, we're.
All right. All right. New Windsor EMS, I'm sorry, Mike, water department.
Uh, just very preliminary report, our month and end until Saturday, so all the numbers are still coming in from our production and whatnot.
No worries.
Um, of note, we have our New York State DEC inspection for the Arthurs and Upper Reservoir dams tomorrow. And then I'll be on vacation from the fourteenth to twenty-third.
All right, make a note of that. Um, also, I asked the water superintendent to put that very beautiful, um, shelf up there with the four pieces of, um, pipes that we have cut out from, um, our infrastructure, eighteen ninety-five, nineteen twenty-seven, and nineteen fifty-five. And, um, appreciate him doing that. That's been a lot of our show and tell. Last week, we had the, uh, first water committee meeting between the town council and the village board to try to work out a plan going forward. Josh and I and the water superintendent are working with council, Mr. McKay, as well as Mr. Gaba to come up, I'm sorry, and deputy mayor Kane, to come up with an IMA, an intermunicipal agreement, which is going to be our first order of business before we go into how are we going to repair and replace all those things. Um, we had a meeting last week with FEMA. I met with Mike Trainer as well as Dave Halverson and FEMA reps from the federal government, plus state reps that came down from Albany. We have a follow-up meeting Wednesday. What time, gentlemen here?
One o'clock.
One o'clock here to talk about the projects we put in for. We have somewhere around three million dollars worth of damages just to our roadways and to our culvert system. Michael, on the water property, what was, what was our number on, uh, water damages?
Uh, one point two million.
So we have approximately four point two million dollars worth of, of projects. FEMA seemed open to what we pitched them on. The sad news was, and I got a personal call from Congressman Ryan's office and spoke to Senator Scoofus's office, was the declination from the federal government for individual assistance. Um, we are still fighting that fight, but unfortunately, the ten or so families in the village that were hurt the worst, and I think there's about twelve or fifteen in the town, we still don't have approval for individual assistance, but FEMA has been fairly responsive to helping us get hold. Now, understand how this works. They only give us a portion of that and we have to do the work first and then we have to get them. It's just like New York Ford, and then get the money reimbursed to us. So just keep that in mind. All right, thank you. New Windsor EMS, the only thing I'm going to tell you is, and I'm going to say this until I leave this office, hopefully without any changes to this, New Windsor EMS, Cornwall EMS, hundred percent response rate. We'll talk about their declining response times, which is what we expect from them in the village and the town and, and in New Windsor. But, um, they do a great job and I hope they continue to do that for us. Um, I've yet to bump into somebody upset with the, um, service that Cornwall EMS or New Windsor EMS has provided them. All right.
One question for superintendent Halverson, the, uh, paving at the waterfront, is that's on the calendar with Tilcon, that whole thing?
I have, I have it scheduled, but I haven't got a confirmation on date yet. They told me end of.
Still working.
October, end of October, beginning of November.
But I will tell you this, I will tell you this, the check is not in the mail. The check is in the village's bank account. So that forty thousand dollars that CSX promised to make us hold down there at the river, we're going to do that. It will be done. Um, just keeping you guys in a loop too, since we're talking about the riverfront, Bill, thank you for the segue. Um, the pavilion project, I apologize. You see the trusses that are wrapped up down there and the kits. Um, we had some problems with, um, um, a group that was going to do it, had some health issues and we had to move it to another group. It ended up, it's going to be, uh, John Sparans's team. They will have that done before Halloween, I'm told. So that is the plan to get that up. We have the, we have the pavement already done, the, um, the concrete pad and putting the thirty by fifty pavilion up. And then next year, we'll work on retrofitting it and then the board will be charged with coming up with a policy on how we're going to allow that to be made use of. But, all right, we'll get there. Um, that's that. That's Tilcon. Um, all right, moving on to resolutions. So we only have one tonight. I am very pleased to announce that Janelle Stong is going to be our planning and zoning board secretary. She is going to start full-time on October sixteenth. She has agreed in principle to twenty-five dollars an hour. Trust me when I say this, I've done the research, I've worked with the treasurer, I've spoken to the town clerk's office. I've spoken to a number of similar municipalities. Um, this is a fair price point for her to start. It's similar to what Megan Gishwin started at when she went full-time. She will work directly from Manny and the building inspector's office, but she will work from, give me the hours again, Dave, because I always forget.
Eight to three thirty.
Eight to three thirty. She will be down there. She will be the face of the DPW building and she will also serve as the secretary to the DPW, um, superintendent. So I'm super excited. She's working part-time right now. Um, she is going to go full-time, which we all knew was going to happen because we were just waiting to see if we had the right fit. She's the right fit. Spoke to Doris, spoke to Megan, spoke to Manny. Um, and everybody seems to be happy with, um, with what Janelle brings to the team. Got a lot to learn because the biggest piece of that is actually being the planning board and zoning board secretary, putting together packets, applications, talking to applicants and dealing with that. But she's a quick study and she'll get there. But she takes over full-time on October sixteenth. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the appointment of Janelle Stong as secretary to the planning and zoning boards for a term ending April first of two thousand and twenty-four at a salary of twenty-five dollars per hour. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Uh, that salary is commensurate with the other similar roles? Is that what it was before?
Yeah, so we started, I want to say we started Megan somewhere around twenty-three and change before she came up here and we renegotiated when she became the deputy village clerk. She was at twenty-four and change. Every village and town clerk that I spoke to, and I spoke to five, said with inflation, twenty-five dollars an hour is a fair starting price point. And again, her, um, you know, her, uh, her term will end on April first, twenty twenty-four, and then we will either choose to reappoint her and renegotiate salary at that point, but twenty-five dollars an hour. All right. Any further discussion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Got it. Okay, so that is it by way of resolution. So I don't want to keep Mr. Takayuki and I did not even have you here to help us out with license plate readers, officer, but thank you for that. Um, so we're here to talk about, um, policy in regards to trees on village right of way. So I talked to Mike, I've been out to see his property. I went out there with, um, with, uh, Dave Halverson. Typically, we don't engage with the public at a work session meeting, but I thought it was fair. He works long hours, his wife does as well. He's been very patient with me and with the board, and so I asked him to come here. So Mike has a tree on his property that Dave and I went out and looked at. It's an old tree, probably eighty years plus, Dave. Eighty years plus. Um, it is in the village right of way. It's within five feet. The center line of the tree is within five feet. Uh, they don't have curbs there, but the edge of the property. The question becomes, where does the village's responsibility for a nuisance tree come in? If the tree is diseased, if the tree is a public safety issue, then we take it down. I promised Mike and I also promised his neighbor across the street. We have our tree folks coming in. They are going to trim that tree up because there's a limb that hangs out ominously over the roadway. What is that root again? They're coming off of gene.
Carol terrorists.
Carol terrorists. That's Carol. How did I not know it was Carol terrorists? Um, it's, it hangs over Carol Terrace. We are going to trim that up. The question becomes, um, Mike's been having some problems in his basement with roots from the tree, which I think it's probably about eighty to a hundred and feet from where the tree is to where the basement and the house foundation is. What is the village's responsibility? My understanding, and that's why I have council here and I'll have council address this, is you, a person, a resident is allowed to take down a tree that's in the village right of way. Um, the village doesn't take down healthy trees.
If it's on their property.
If it's on their property, which this is. It's on, it's on his, and I can pull up the tax rolls, but it's on his property in the village right away. Counselors, so I know I, I kind of gave you a heads up, we were going to talk about this. What should the village's position be on this in regards to consideration for somebody? Because Mike ain't going to be the only one. Somebody else will come to us in a couple of weeks with a similar situation. What is the village's responsibility regarding his tree in his basement?
Well, if it's, if it's on his property and then it's, it's not the village's responsibility. Any portion of the tree that hangs over the street or is in the right of way that can cause a public safety concern, that is the village's responsibility. My understanding is that it's a, um, some, a mature but healthy tree.
Yeah.
So it'll be cut, so potentially dangerous limb is going to be eliminated. But that's essentially what the village's obligation is.
Yeah.
Maintain it. If it's in the right of way, make sure it's healthy. Uh, it's our responsibility if anything happens to it from a public safety perspective. Uh, but the portion of the tree that's on private property would be a private concern.
That was my understanding, but I wanted to hear it from Joe and we've been dealing with a bunch of other stuff, Mike, but that's, that was what my understanding would have been. So even if it's a nuisance tree that runs a root, you know, onto your property, so long as the tree is on the residence. Onto your property, so long as the tree is on the resident's property, it is their responsibility. And Mike, if you wanted to cut that root out, we wouldn't stop you. If you wanted to take that tree down, we wouldn't stop you. We wouldn't come out there and say. You're in violation, you're taking down a village tree, because it is on your property. Am I right?
It's on your property, yes. It's your tree. The part that hangs over the street or the sidewalk, that's our responsibility to maintain.
Right. I, I mean, my question was, um, you had explained this to me and, you know, I understand all of that completely. I, but if I were to cut the root, the tree would soon become no longer healthy and then what happens?
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
If it's not a taproot, probably not.
I mean, it's roots like. And, and by root, I mean several roots. So I mean, if I can cut them, that's, that's fine. I mean, as long as it's not gonna. Damage my foundation, I'll cut the roots.
I mean, if it was your preference, do you wanna lose that tree there with the shade and all that? I mean, other than, other than.
It was my preference and I'm sure everybody on the corner there would be to lose the tree completely.
Would be to lose the tree?
Yeah. Oh yeah, everyone hates it.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
What kind of tree is it?
Silver maple.
Yeah, it's a, it's an invasive, no doubt about it, but it's gotta be seventy, eighty years old. Well, it's an invasive. I know they are.
You know your section a lot?
Right, I'm right on the corner of.
No, I'm trying to think of what section it is. I'm trying to pull the tax map off.
Is the village gonna have it reviewed? Is somebody gonna take that?
Cause I don't think. You make that turn coming around there, it's right there.
Dave, you can pull it up on the GIS. They'll give you, just put his address.
That neighborhood's different.
Okay, well, if, 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 if actually it's different, I'll speak with Dave.
Okay, all right. So you can bring it up, right? You bringing up ECO? Well, Dave, what are you checking on? You checking on finding whether it's in the right of way or not?
Trying to get the tax map.
Got, but to determine whether or not it's in the right of way or not?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it is, but as Dave tells me all the time, streets are wider. There's less of a right of way, like Pace and Road, your right of way is smaller because it's from the center line out. More tighter roads like Wood Avenue where I live, the village owns more of a right of way. But when we say own, it just means we can trim things there, but it's still a, a tree on the resident's property. That's their tree.
Right.
So.
That, if there's a fence on that piece of, on your property, correct?
Correct.
If I'm not mistaken?
Right. Yep, we saw it.
The tree is right outside the fence.
It's outside the fence?
Yes.
Well then, so what is your thought?
Outside the fence.
The fence is on the property line.
So his property starts at the fence? He doesn't own the property there?
The previous owner had, if I'm not mistaken, I'm trying to jog my memory, the previous owner, the fence was on the outside.
Why would they bring it in?
It was, it was made to put on his own property.
Oh, okay, when the property changed hands, they made it.
So the homeowner can cut down the roots on his property. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And the, and the only other question I had is if we're gonna have someone come out, I don't know if you have an arborist to check the tree before you cut the large limb or not? Or at least somebody who's knowledgeable, if he's, no?
I agree.
Oh, I mean, if. He might be able to give the.
No, she didn't have to though either. Oh, I know. But, so here's what I'm confused about though. So he doesn't own the property on the outside of the fence line?
Not if I'm.
So then who owns the property? Because then his argument may be, the tree ain't on my property. Now, you're enjoying the property. But his argument may be, the tree is on our property. How is that possible? How do we own a piece of property on the side of his house?
Those roads are all fifty feet wide.
But we don't own the road.
No, no, not the road. We're talking about that strip on the outside of the fence.
Right, so, I, I don't know exactly what this gentleman.
We do own the road. How did you say we don't own the road?
We don't own the real estate under the road. It's our right of way.
Right.
So.
Oh, you're saying his deed goes out to the center line?
Probably, I don't know. Most likely, I'll give you a friend, I'll use myself rather than use him. I'll use myself. I live on Main Street. It's a New York State.
You're in Washingtonville and that doesn't make any sense. It doesn't apply. We do things here smarter. To the center of the road.
That happened to be beautiful, you call it Washingtonville, by the way.
Those are my terms.
So, so my deed says I.
But you can't, you can't set up a table and chairs on the center of the road.
So.
But if your property was surveyed, they wouldn't draw a line out to the middle of the road, would they? On the tax map, your, the line doesn't go out to the center of the road.
Surveying or not, the meets and bounds description of the deed, if it was survey, can go to the center of the road.
Joe, so let's cut to the chase here, so he can go home to his family. So here's the thing. If it's on his property, he can cut whatever he wants.
Right.
If he doesn't wanna spend the money to take the tree down, which is what I'm guessing you're looking for is for us to take it down.
Tree is not on his property at all.
Well, that's what I'm saying. What research needs to be done, what research needs to be done? To ensure that what happens going forward is righteous. Either we handle it or we say to him, sorry, we can't, it's on you. What research needs to be done?
Well, we could look at the tax map. We could look at the gentleman's deed if he passes it.
All right. Can we access his deed without him having to pull it up?
We might be able to do it on the county.
Okay.
I'll say this one thing. I think we established in this conversation, if you need to cut the roots, you can just go ahead and cut the roots.
Yes.
My only concern with that was if. Quickly become no longer a healthy tree and then become even more of a hazard.
Well, if it becomes a hazard.
Yeah, I'm sure those roots go underneath the road. They're going under other houses. That thing is, whatever you see up top is down below. So some of them are in your basement. But let me do this. Can I ask you two tomorrow to just take a look and figure out? By looking at the tax map and telling me, is the tree on his property or who's the nebulous owner, the amorphous? Owner of that, who is that? It's us?
It's our right of way.
But you, but it's not our property, it's his property. So even though the fence is, okay. You're being confusing. Where the fence is, he still owns, he's still, it's still his property out to the macadam, correct?
At least, most likely.
Maybe beyond that, all right.
Dave raised the question of the tax map and the property line and the fence.
All right.
Probably a survey that shows.
Let us do this, figure out that answer and I'll get back to you.
How long ago did he purchase that?
You can cut the roots.
Two years.
Two years ago?
So you, you had to get a new survey? Can I get a copy of it?
That would help.
Did you actually get a new survey? Or you just did a survey certification from the previous owner?
But can we still get, can? All right, all right, good. All right, unless you wanna stick around for root canal, get out of here.
And I can find a pen.
Yeah, Mike, will you reach out to me and get that to us if you have it? You can find it. Thank you. All right, you got it, brother. Thank you. All right, moving on. Um, we spoke about this earlier, the quick claim of the Grandview property. There is a piece of property that a resident owns on the corner of Wilson and Grandview. And interestingly enough, how are you, interestingly enough. Um, for some reason, there's this little piece of property here in yellow, which I know you can't see unless you're the board and sitting around the table. But it is at the end of Wilson and runs into Grandview. It's, we're in yellow right here. And what we're talking about is potentially, um, doing a quick claim on this property. For the resident who has been maintaining that property for the last two years. All the other properties on Grandview actually end on the street. This is the only one that doesn't. I have asked our council to.
So the piece is across the street?
No, the piece is on this side of Grandview. It's, it's part of the person's front yard.
There's two.
Right, so it's this property right here. That's it. I know the house. It's that right there. So, um, Joe. Would it be okay for me to say to you, since I like action items? For you to just make a reach out to the attorney that you dealt with back in twenty twenty-one? Um, Mr. E. Mitchell of NMD Law, just say, hey, look, the village is interested in entertaining this. It makes no sense for, we don't maintain it. Your client has maintained it and we will be willing, meaning this village board, to discuss with you a quick claim. Did you do that?
Well, I think what, what we should probably do is have the property owner reach out to you.
Formally request it?
My, my, I don't wanna guess, but it's possible that was in connection with a, a real estate transaction that attorney may or may not represent them anymore.
All right.
So.
It was a real estate transaction.
So.
I'll reach out to her.
Yeah, so we can, we can get some more information. She can provide us with some information so that we can clarify ownership and things like that.
I will handle that. Nope. All right, I'll handle that. Okay, moving on. Sewer sent, uh, sewer system and benches. About six months ago, Dave Halverson, the DPW superintendent and I went to. Same place where Mike is from, the, um, Homeland Avenue, the Homeland area of Cornwall. To look at some complaints from residents there in regards to the fact that their sewers were backing up into their houses. Um, a lot of those sewer pipes, there's no pitch to them. Literally, there's zero, it's like one degree pitch. So when sewage goes down, it just sits down below and it doesn't empty out. Um, we had our engineers come out. Dave and I walked it with the engineers. One of the things that we promised, the homeowners there that were dealing with the backups. Was that we would agree to have the village put in benches, which are not cost prohibitive. They're basically a little channel. They look like two curbs that if you go, and I've been in a number of sewers around here, I don't know why. You don't sit on them, but if you look at it. But if, but if you actually, but if you actually look at them, you can see the way that they funnel the sewage. So that it just moves at a crisper rate through, instead of sitting and just doing a slow trickle. So. Dave has assured me that he's gonna talk to Jason because I told Jason the other night, this is a priority for me to do this before the winter. And this is actually a project we can do in the winter.
But to be fair, none of the issues that were being caused over there were not caused by this. This was just something that we found while we were doing it. The backups they had was their own sewer line that was collapsed.
Agreed, I, but I can, I can understand and, and, and empathize with the homeowners. And since our sewer system right now was drawn on pieces of spiral notebook paper in the early nineteen hundreds. Um, and are basically line and block charts that, you know, are, there's no, there's no laser finding of them. There's no. It's not, it's, no engineer did it. It's literally written pen and ink on pieces of loose leaf school paper. So that's what we're dealing with, but this is one thing that we did promise the residents. It is at low cost. It's not cost prohibitive. To do for them, just to give them a better peace of mind and I'm gonna commit to making that happen. Okay, moving on. Ah, as Jim King says, well, the Cornwall Yacht Club roadway contract appraisal lease property with the village. Um, we're still in, um, attorney. Uh, negotiations with the yacht club's attorneys. Um, we're not gonna discuss it tonight. We're not gonna get into it tonight, but the village is in the process of having the piece of property. Next to the yacht club, which is about a hundred and fifty feet of prime, uh, waterfront property. Um, that the village leases to the yacht club. We're in the process of having that appraised. The village board is going to caucus. To find out what we believe that, that property should be valued at for lease purposes and go from there. We also have the issue where a number of citizens groups have come to me in regards to putting up a kayak rack down there for public use. We got two great kayak companies. They do great tours here, um, down at the waterfront, but we do not have a kayak rack. And we're looking for space and we're very limited, so that is currently being dealt with. All right, view preservation policy. A number of residents have come to me from Taft. Off of Bayview, from Grandview and Wilson. When I say a number, four different residents have come to see me personally. In regards to the village's policy on view preservation. I'm still confused. I think my two go-to attorneys here are still confused as far as what really this policy means. Well, because the way you interpret it, our village view preservation law was put in place in nineteen ninety-two. But in two thousand and twelve, it was amended. And the amendment is what I tell residents that live on private property. That want to have other private properties or village property remediated. To increase their view of the view shed. The view shed being the Hudson River. Uh, north up to the Newburgh Beacon Bridge and south down to West Point. Um, what I found is that the village is not required to do anything to protect. Views from private properties, meaning if you live on a piece of private property, the village is not required to tell somebody. Or compel somebody to trim their, their, um, their vegetation. And then C, which says, the village, it's not the intent of this regulation to cause the elimination, cutting or other trimming of existing. Naturally growing vegetation of private property to preserve or protect views from another private property or from public property. Um, the arguments that people make in those places, Grandview, Bayview and Taft is this, they pay more taxes than we do. Um, and if they're paying more taxes, a portion of their tax assessment is based on the fact that they have amazing views. How do we answer that? And if below their properties, it's village property, or as I talked to Mike and Dave about today. Some of that property underneath Taft and underneath Bayview may actually be.
Steep slopes.
Not just steep slopes, that's a separate thing, may belong to the Palisades. Now, um, what is our policy on that? If somebody says, I should have a right to trim trees that are on village property. I get the steep slope piece and erosion. I get that. But if you have an arborist that comes in, and I know you can find an opinion wherever you wanna find it. And to tell you whatever you wanna find out. But if you have an arborist that says, it's okay to trim the tops of these trees and it won't hurt erosion or hurt the trees. What is our answer to those people that are arguing that they should have a right to have those trees trimmed?
They wanna trim, trim village trees? Is that what they're saying?
Yes, that's one. And then I'm gonna give you private property trims, but the ones that are on village property. What's our argument? Here's the. Well, I mean, I've gone through it, but I mean, it's, it's confusing.
Yeah, I mean, I, I haven't looked at the statute in years, but, um.
As Jim King says, we go through this every five years.
Sure, we do.
Just enough time for the trees to grow.
Obviously, they can't have trimmed trees on private property. It's not.
You can't compel somebody to, right? And the village can't, because there, there are residents that want us as a village board to compel another resident. That is obscuring their, their, their view of the view shed, for lack of a better term. And I told them, this tells me I cannot do that.
Presumably, the law has some restrictions on obscuring an existing view, right? Well, I haven't read it, so I'm guessing it's like, what's it preserving? Is it like, that's why there's arguments about building a house on Grandview that's gonna obscure a view of the river from people across the street? Or like you can't plant a twenty-five foot tree in a gap necessarily. I'm asking, I don't know. So anyway, so okay, so we're talking about existing stuff.
So you can't.
Just to keep it narrow.
So when you say existing and ground cover, you know how quickly it grows?
Yeah.
So I say, well, that's existing. And then the woman whose view is being obscured says, but that wasn't there two years ago. And I said, but that's weeds. It's not, it's not, it wasn't planted. I know, but it says existing and that didn't exist two years ago when I bought my property. How do you, how do you thread that needle?
Maybe it's time for our next five-year review.
All right, so can I just, can I do this? Can I ask the board members? And you can find this online and each of you have the village code in a brown binder and you can go look at this. It is one seventy-two. Section one seventy-two dash seventy-three. Please read through it. Um, one seventy-two, section one seventy-two dash seventy-five. And there's appeals and severability and effective dates beyond that. But really, it's three pages that I, I feel like, and I'm not the attorney here. I felt like were the most, uh, that had the most applicability. Please take a look at it and then weigh in with me privately and then at an upcoming meeting.
Do you know who wrote it?
I, Mark Edso was part of that.
Ninety-two?
No, in two thousand and twelve.
Two thousand and twelve, had to be Mark, yes.
I remember reviewing that in two thousand and twelve.
That's because you were on the board then.
Yeah, I was.
When did you get on the board?
So.
I remember.
So this was, this was added July sixteenth, two thousand and twelve.
So shortly after you got.
Yeah.
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 You're right. No, I wasn't, I wasn't on.
Yeah.
That's what I thought, okay.
This was, this was, this was ratified in the summer of two thousand and twelve. All right, that's just on your.
And do we, do we have an email from the property owners?
No, they have my cell phone.
There's too much information.
I'll pull up my.
I was just gonna say, yeah. All right, eh, all right, so moving forward, moving, moving, moving. Moving forward, property tax exemption for volunteer firefighters. All right, here's a thing that seems about as pro forma. And there's nothing we're gonna disagree about on this, but we. and there's nothing we're gonna disagree about on this, but we have to get this thing ratified. I know Joe put something together tonight, and this is what it relates to. So in New York State, if you are a volunteer firefighter, um, we want to, we want to stipulate that if you live in the village of Cornwall and Hudson, that you should not have to pay property taxes. Now, that's a wonderful thing, and all of us would sit around and go, duh, that makes perfect sense. But we have to come up with a policy. How does a policy, um, how does a policy work in regards to participation, compliance, all the things? And it was something I spoke to the assistant chief about this morning, and I've spoken to the chief about when he came to see me last week or week before, chief?
Week before.
Week before, when we spoke about it. What is our policy? And I know Joe has looked at that, and I'll turn it over to Joe. I would like to get this off of our docket as soon as possible. I think we should approve it. But I want to make sure that you're not gonna have somebody come out of the grave and say, you know, I passed away in nineteen forty-five, but I was a member of the fire company from nineteen twenty to nineteen forty-five, and I'm entitled to this, or, you know, something. I know that sounds crazy, but I'm just saying, have a plan in place that is easy for everyone to understand, makes sense, and is fair. Joe?
I just, I, if I may, unless I misheard you, you made it sound as though this would remove all obligation to property taxes for volunteer firefighters, but it is a portion of, uh, of.
Correct. I'm sorry if I misspoke. And they would, they would have to live, I, I probably did. Um, they will have to live in the village, and they would have to meet certain criterion, you know?
Service time.
Service time, uh, participation, compliance, member of good standing. Chief, what am I missing? What are the things that we need to consider?
They have to be part of the village fire department.
Right.
Yeah, we're only talking about.
I know, what I'm just saying is that when you get into this, it, it doesn't come all the way down to the certification section where you got. Cause I don't want, I don't want people to be misled. Okay, they belong to the town fire department. They're not gonna.
Yeah, I got you.
And they live in the village, see what I'm saying?
So, and, and because we're New York State and home rule, and there's fire districts and there's school districts and all of that, so we do have members in the village fire department who live in the town.
Right.
Um, and the town may pass a similar law, and their service in the village should.
Right, that, that, that would make sense, because the village is part of the town, so you, you're covered. I'm just pointing out that someone who's now in Highland lives in here, this is not gonna help them out. Cause they don't belong to the village fire department.
But unless they, they get the same.
Village exemption, so you have to own property.
But how does that apply? Cause Hudson Highland's doing the same thing, and the town's doing the same thing. How does that apply if you live in the village, but you're a member of Hudson Highland, because you're still a member of Cornwall?
You get an exemption on the town tax.
On the town tax, I agree. I agree. We're just talking about people that live in the village and participated SKE two.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, what do we need to do, Joe?
And also be for volunteer ambulance, uh, AMS personnel.
Yes, and I didn't mention that either, but you're correct.
But again, they would have, so they may have to be part of New Windsor AMS, but if they live and own property in the village, they would be entitled to an exemption.
So do they get both, Joe? When the town passes there?
It's a property tax exemption, so wherever you own your property.
Right.
So we only control each town, each village, the county.
Oh, right, right. It's just property tax, so it doesn't matter. We're not, I got it.
Right. So there, there, it's taken pretty much directly out of New York State, um, uh, property tax law. There are just a few, um, options that I've, I've highlighted through the village in the draft local law, and it is a law. It's not a policy. It is a law. And in this particular case, um, if the town has not already, I don't know if the town has adopted a law yet. And just, and the reason that I asked that is, is the town, the town assessor is the village assessor, right? We never went to the town.
Correct.
So just, just simply for the reason that the town tax assessor also is the village tax assessor. We may want to just get some comments from, from the town, the town tax assessor, the town attorney.
Got it.
It may also prompt them to.
Where did you take this from?
This is something I prepared based upon the state statute.
Got it. Any chance you could check with Steve Gabba tomorrow, just find out where the town is in the process, and, and it probably makes sense for us to mirror what they're doing.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So since it's the same assessor, you don't want to have wildly different.
Hundred percent.
Statutes. Alright, I don't know if the town has done this or not.
I have not had a chance to read the, I don't know if you guys have, and, and ladies have had a chance. I just kind of glanced at it. I'd like to give it more of a, more of a read-through, but I'd also like you to just touch base with, uh, with attorney Gabba and just say, hey, what's the town doing? And I can ask Josh too, but just say, what, what, what are you, what are you doing? Let's just do something similar.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we should do this in the next month or, or two. Uh, certainly by the end of the year, because we want to have this in place before the assessor starts, you know, doing the twenty-four assessment.
Yes. Now, what I'm gonna ask the chief and the assistant chief is this, what should be the criterion? And I know it, it's left to the board to make that determination, but how many years should it be? Um, how much participation? Um, those are kind of things that I would lean on the fire company, the, the bosses to say, this makes sense, and this is what you should do. Charlie, Mike?
And I did send both the chairs, and, uh, who's it, which one?
I'm the assistant.
Assistant and the chief.
So the boiler plate. Boiler plate says two, uh, up to five. Did you have, did anything jump out at you, Charlie, you were uncomfortable with, with the boiler plate?
There's nothing in there that I'm uncomfortable with. Um, it, it does look very much like the state law. The part that is squishy, and this is not a comment on the law itself, but who are those folks that are going to qualify? Um, and I don't know if that can, how easy that is to put into the village statute. The commissioners have been looking at that. We've been working on, um, bylaws for the department. And we're, we're coming up with, uh, standards for who is an active firefighter.
Oh, I see what you mean. What about active honorary?
Right, so the, the purpose of the New York State law is to, it, it's a recruitment and retention.
Yes.
Effort. Um, so, so, you know, active honorary, they're, they're not necessarily, you know, that's a, that's a membership status in the company.
Right.
The fire department, we're working on, you have to show competency and demonstrate, demonstrate proficiency in certain areas every year.
Yep.
You have to have your physical that says you're good to go and start fighting fires.
Respirator.
Yep. This law doesn't necessarily say anything about participation, fitness and readiness to go. But, you know, what happens to the person who, who shows the proficiency, gets their physical and does not show them?
Well, I'm happy to take any, any comments. I, that's why, again, I was trying to look to see if the town had adopted anything. I don't know if the county has adopted anything yet. Couple of months ago, they have said.
They, they, there, there was a, uh, a press release recently that I believe they have, and I believe the town may have as well.
Alright, so, so, and this email I sent to the village board today, I essentially said, here's a first draft for discussion purposes. I will follow up, uh, with, see, get your copy of the town's copy of the county, and just some more general information, so we can, um, we'll, it's just a first round, and they only saw it today. I'm surprised they have any comments at all.
Okay. Those are things that we have been thinking about.
Okay. Alright, moving on. Um, next item of business is, uh, the Woodbury Creek Monitoring Decommission. Um, for those new here, um, um, for those new, um, TV, something happened. The Woodbury Creek is an area that is a, um, is an important tributary to our aquifer and a place where trout, uh, speckled trout and rainbow trout are considered to be a, I don't wanna say a protected species, but one that we're at least trying to monitor and, and maintain. Um, and as a result of that, probably about seven, eight years ago, Mike, when, when did we start this? It was obviously during.
Five years ago.
You think it was only five? I thought it was before me.
Two thousand eighteen, two thousand seventeen, that era.
Okay, um, so essentially, four different municipalities, the village of Cornwall and Hudson, the town of Cornwall, the village of Woodbury, and the town of Woodbury went together, um, kicked in X amount of dollars um, each year for monitors to be put on different ends of the deepest slough. I, I don't know what you call that, the deepest, um, area of the creek to monitor it and to see how much the stream had become depleted. First couple of years, we actually had some, um, dry seasons, and we were concerned about it, not just because we have a well field close by, uh, drawing water, but, um, you know, um, another community has, um, a well there also that draws water from that aquifer, that same aquifer, and we were concerned about it. Last three or four years, we've had, just to our detriment in a certain sense, had a ton of water. Um, so it has not been an issue. So for the last two years, um, the town supervisor and myself and the village and town of Woodbury agreed to just leave it in the bay and leave the equipment in place. And look, we'll just suspend operations. We'll try it again next year. This year, we got crushed with water again. Helps our reservoirs, helps us not having to get onto the aqueduct, which is huge for Cornwall water. Um, and it just didn't make sense to monitor it. They're asking us about decommissioning the equipment, and the four of us, meaning the two mayors and the two supervisors agreed to decommission the equipment for the, for the time being, meaning don't leave it in place, because they, they charge us to have the equipment there. Doesn't make sense to leave it there, and if we need to monitor, because next year's super drier, we're concerned that the aquifer's being drawn down, we will commission them to do it again.
But then we already provide, provide the reports from the dry years to D E C, and we have not heard anything correct.
Nothing came of that.
And the, the equipment, this was voluntary among the municipalities, but the, the monitoring system was not required by the D E C, correct?
No, we entered into an agreement so that we could then go to the D E C.
I just wanted to make sure before we decommission.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure, cause I don't, I try not to do, I try not to do things like this without.
I know the monitor, yes, I know that.
Without poor congruence, but I'm pretty sure I kept everybody in loop on this. We've not done it for the last two years. Mike, how long now has it been since the last time that we actually had to take water off the aqueduct?
Since, uh, November of twenty twenty-one, I believe.
So the two things aren't necessarily analogous, but we haven't had to draw water off the aqueduct. The stream seems to be in pretty good shape. If we need to monitor it again, because we have people out there that are not on our water system, but that are on wells too, that get impacted, we'll certainly revisit it. Alright, last thing, and we can wrap this up, sexual harassment policy. Um, Joe, I know that you had sent some changes to it, um, some additions. Has everybody looked at that? Is everybody good with it? Does anybody want to weigh in on something that they think should be different on that? Because I asked Doris to pull this up. On August twenty-first, I don't know where I was. Um, August twenty-first of two thousand twenty-three, Deputy Mayor Kane made the motion to approve the sexual harassment policy, which was revised August twenty twenty-three, seconded by trustee Carnright, and carried upon by a vote of three ayes and zero nays. So what else do we need to do on that? Are we good with where we're at on it? Are there additional, additional changes that we need to look at?
No, it's, it has been done.
Alright, well, there you go. I'm not trying to create more work.
But every, but every employee has to have to receive a copy and acknowledge receipt.
I know, and this is, this is the thing that beguiles me, and that's the word for tonight, beguiles. Why do we have policies in place, and then we don't have to have the unions agree to our policies?
Well, this is a state mandated policy.
So they couldn't fight it if, let's say, somebody in C S C A or P B A.
Objecting to the law.
Good enough for me. Alright, with that having been said, um, let's go around the table. Um, I'm gonna start with, uh, I'm gonna start with the newest trustee, trustee Paleola. Anything to add or finish up with?
I do, I do not.
Alright.
I do not.
You'll do this for two meetings, and the third meeting, we will be able to shut you out.
Right, right, right.
Alright, the trustee brain.
Uh, no, uncharacteristically, nothing.
Whoa, alright, trustee Carnright. This is gonna be a quick, Deputy Mayor Kane.
Save it for the stated meeting.
Alright, for what meeting?
Our regularly stated meeting, not our business meeting.
Okay, which is not gonna be next Monday, because Columbus Day, it's gonna be the following Monday. So, so everybody knows, which I believe is October sixteenth, correct? Alright, just let me double check. Okay, good. Alright, before I wrap things up, let me go around trustees, trustees. Superintendents, any alibis?
Won't be here for the meeting.
You will not be here Monday? You will not be here Monday?
For the meetings, the sixteenth.
The sixteen. I'll be at school. He's on vacation.
Got it. Chief, anything to add? Any alibis?
No, sir.
Alright, chief, anything to add? Alright, hearing nothing, I am going to make.
You didn't ask me.
Oh, Joe, I, I know, and I didn't even, Joe complained. He goes, I didn't even get to talk during the attorney-client session. Alright, counselor, anything to add?
No, I have nothing to add.
Motion to adjourn?
I would, oh.
You wanted to make the motion?
I just, no, I would just say that he, uh, the counselor here sent, uh, the, the Donnie Farm Maintenance Agreement to the, uh, to Cene Hudson. Uh, and I did see that a resident asked about whether we were gonna discuss the proposal for the Savage Wonder Festival tonight. We thought we might, but, um, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Not on the agenda, so I just wanted to.
And that, that is on me, and to trustee Brand's point, um, there have been several residents that asked me, and they've spoken to, to Bill as well, and maybe some of you other trustees in regards to the proposal that is being put forth by the Vet Rep Theater to hold the Savage Wonder Festival down at, uh, Donnie Farm property. Um, you know, concerns are, hey, three to five thousand people. Um, concerns are getting people in and out. How do you do that? Security, all the things. Um, and Bill, for some reason, and you're right, um, I had it on the calendar to discuss that in October, so I will make a note. Um, we will discuss it at the business meeting on the sixteenth. Um, I'll make sure Doris puts it on there, and I'll ask Vet Rep folks to be there to answer questions from the board. We'll treat that topic like, um, we'll treat that topic like it's a work session, so that we can get a good sense of whether or not to proceed or not. They need to know, because they need to book it, and if they don't book it, they've gotta move on. So, alright. Alright, um, motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? Keep in mind until, Mike, Mike, can you make sure, Dave, can you end this? We are live right now.
The zero of two hundred watchers. Oh, there's one. There's one up in the upper left. Hello.